You know, my wife, my dad even went and if he did, they went to Canada. They went to Canada, so it was like.
Hi Barb, are we ready to get rolling? I think she's there.
I'm sorry. Yes, we're ready on our end. How about all of you?
We are. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you very clearly. Thank you, Lindsay.
Okay, um, we have all board members present. Laura is online.
Okay.
Um, Brooke is on still. I think she must be waiting for one person to let in. And then it looks like we have two other coworkers of yours joining.
Yes, correct, correct.
The floor is all yours.
You don't have anything else you need to do then? That's great. Thank you so much. Uh, first of all, it's nice to be here again. Thank you so much for being here tonight for the board interview training session. Uh, with me, there are two MSBA folks I'd like to introduce briefly. Uh, Shelby Herrera is on the call. You may recognize her name. She is the support person for executive search and strategic planning at MSBA. And is our contact person for the Revellis application system and a lot of the technical issues that we utilize in doing executive search. So thanks for joining us Shelby. You'll be seeing a lot more and hearing from Shelby a lot more once the applications have closed. Uh, so I'm really glad you're here Shelby. And also with us is Lee Warren. Uh, Lee is an MSBA service provider who has led our searches. And he is currently leading a couple of searches for us in Minnesota and is joining us to observe this board interview training. For some use in these searches that he is currently leading for us. So Lee, thank you so much for being with us as well. Good to have you both. Can everyone in the boardroom and Laura online hear me okay? Okay, great. Uh, what we're going to do tonight usually runs about two hours or so. Um, the first thing we're going to cover is the interview training and preparation packet. Uh, which was emailed. I know Brooke passed it on to you and perhaps made copies. Awesome. Great. Thank you so much. We're going to do that first. And for many of you, it will be a review of the Hiring Rights Superintendent Workshop, which we conducted in August. Um, I know there are some new board members as well. Very nice to meet you. Is it Nicole and Brittany? Is that right? Hi, good to meet you both. I'm glad you're here. And I know that one of you was in the last meeting we had as well, so I've seen you twice now. And we did get the materials uh, from Lindsay from the workshop that we held in August. Much of this is a review of that, but I want to make sure that we answer every question that every board member might have relative to particularly the interview process. But we'll do all of that first and just stop me, wave your arms or something if you have questions as we go through the material. And then we're going to get into some specifics around the DGF search. And that was the second part of the meeting. Uh, we're going to be talking about the stakeholder engagement report from the listening sessions that were held both online and via Google Meet. Uh, we're also going to talk about the schedule for the first round of interviews at the end of January. And also the questions that you might think about using for the round one interviews. Uh, we do meet again on January 25th as a group. At that point, MSBA will present our recommendations for potentially six folks that we feel you should interview based on your hiring criteria and what we know of them and have vetted them for. Um, and we also want to hear your thoughts if there are other candidates you feel that you should interview. So that evening, you'll be selecting your finalists. After that point, you can name their names, but until then, you can. Uh, and as you know, your deadline is next Monday, so a week from now up until midnight. You do have applications. People have thrown their hat and ring already. And it's a good number of folks. We usually see another search of people right before the deadline. So what I would expect next Monday. Uh, we'll close it at midnight and then provide those names and applications for your review a day and a half after that. Um, we'll also talk about a little bit rounding round because the interviews themselves will occur the 27th and 28th, 28th and 29th maybe. But I know February is round two, 28th and 29th. Um, so then early the next week, you have round two. So we're going to be talking a little bit about round two and give you some things to think about. Which you'll then discuss and make some decisions about on January 25th. In addition, the candidates you want to interview in round one. So that's an overview of what we're going to cover tonight. Again, it normally runs about two hours. Uh, but we will stay as long as you have questions. I want to ensure that you're comfortable with everything uh, that we've discussed tonight as well as answering any questions moving forward. So with that, unless there's anything to start with for questions, we're going to dive right into that packet that I saw you had. Interview training and preparation. All right, the first page is the relevant law page. Some of this is common sense and yet we always feel it's important that boards recognize that as an equal opportunity employer, you have got to follow some rules. There are things you cannot ask about. Um, and I think some of the examples in here drive home the fact that common sense should dictate you don't ask about them. But when you look at this list, you'll see the protected categories. And you flat out can't ask direct questions about those, but you also can't ask indirect questions. And again, we're going to revisit questions with you more in more detail later in the meeting today. But I really want you to be careful and aware of the fact that there are laws governing what you can and cannot ask your superintendent candidates for the position. That next page where it talks about interview questions and non-discrimination laws. When you read the not permissible to ask column, those are the ones that it seems pretty obvious. You don't want to be asking those of any candidates. Anything that might cause you to make a judgment about a candidate based on a protected category is off limits. However, there are ways that you can ask things surrounding that topic, which is the third column, permissible to ask. You can ask folks what languages they speak. You cannot ask them what country they were born in, their parents were born in. And yet it does get to the same kind of issue if that is of interest. If you have a very multilingual community, you can certainly ask about languages, for example, without asking about nationality or ethnicity. I'm not going to go through all of these, but I would encourage you to take your time and review them. And see if there are any of the categories that you feel you want to delve into a bit in either round one or two. But I think this is a very good guideline. Yeah, ask if they have been arrested or spent time in jail. Uh, you can't ask them how they spend their time off hours, if they like to consume alcoholic beverages, et cetera. Uh, those sorts of things, I keep saying it's common sense, and yet on occasion, for some reason during interviews, you may want to get to know someone better and you may ask something that's inappropriate. So keep these things in mind, please, if you would, on those first several pages about don't ask. Page six touches on disability. You want to be very careful with that one as well. Again, there are things that are permissible. So I'm not going to dwell on these, but you can ask, for instance, if they have the required licenses. There are folks who might say that ties into a not permissible to ask, but no, that's entirely okay. All right, and all of these questions have been vetted by MSBA's legal counsel and assured to sit there in the realm of what is permissible to ask about. And then I'm going to get to the policies. Wouldn't be an MSBA meeting if we didn't talk about policies, at least for a few minutes. Um, the first one on page nine there is the EEO policy. Um, it's model policy 401. And all this says in here is that all areas of employment, which include hiring, are bound by EEO requirements. MSBA is an EEO search agency and you are an EEO employer. So that one's pretty cut and dried. It's a very short policy too. It's only a page, which is unusual for MSBA. Uh, page nine talks about private personality. We have discussed in our meetings previously that a lot of the executive search process is a balancing act between the open meeting law and the Data Practices Act. At times, those have felt contradictory to school board members because you need to protect the privacy of your applicants. That's a requirement. And yet you must do that in a public forum. And so it can be done, absolutely, if you understand the roles that each of them play. Now, when you look at policy 406, on the third, fourth page, page 12, C, at the top of page 12, is really the part that I want to emphasize when it comes to search services. It says that the names of applicants are private data. Okay, the names are private, except when they become finalists for an employment position. All right, when they become finalists for an employment position. So then if you turn back to page 10, just very clearly says that a finalist is someone who is selected to be interviewed by the school board for a position. So those two sentences right there tell you everything you need to know about the Practices Act and the superintendent search. Their names are private until they've been finalists. And they are a finalist if they've been selected to be interviewed by you. All right, any questions on that policy, data practices? All right, then why don't we go to the next policy, which is a long policy, page 18. The open meeting law. I will mention it probably every time we get together, that every aspect of this superintendent search must be done in an open meeting. And um, that's a very good thing because transparency builds trust. And when you conduct your business at the board table and people have avenues to observe the board business, it will build trust and increase the likelihood of success for your new superintendent. So please keep in mind that everything that we do, everything we do through the search process here, um, all the meetings we have scheduled, the special meetings, there's the interviews, those need to be posted 72 hours in advance. And you need to put the purpose of the meeting in the posting and people need to have access to see this meeting. Um, with the pandemic, you're limited as to how many people could join you in your meeting because it could be a large gathering. So you also need to provide online access. And whether that is done through live streaming uh, or recording and offering it later for viewing by the public is up to you. As long as there is a way for your public to observe what occurred at the board table relative to the search process. Are there any questions on the open meeting law as to the search? Okay, I'm going to jump ahead past that policy, which takes us to page 27. You know, sometimes we've found that it's easier to tell people what not to do than to tell them what to do. And so one of the things we offer up is common mistakes that can be made during the interview process. These were in the booklet that you saw when we conducted our workshop in August. Um, I'm not going to go through all of them, but I think when you read them, you're going to start to feel like, I got this. I know these things. We did that. Um, we have selection criteria. For example, the very first one is not having clearly defined criteria. And you did that right away at the planning meeting. It's in your vacancy brochure. Uh, it's the yardstick you're going to use to measure your applicants by. So you've done a very, very good job with that. You want to make a good impression, which is to say, don't make a bad impression. And we did talk about that. Um, one of the things you'll want to consider when it comes to interviews is how you will, for example, answer questions the candidate will have for you. Every candidate should manage their time well enough in the interview that they have the opportunity to ask the board questions. So one of the things we'll talk about in more detail here is how to prepare for that and decide who on the board will field what kinds of questions. They really would like to get to know all of you because it is a two-way street. So you really want to think through who has strengths in which areas or is most familiar with certain areas. Uh, so that they can get to know, is this a good fit for me as a candidate as well? So making good impression is great. I'm not going to talk about don't ask, big answers. Keep in mind that it's a big picture also. Uh, this process covers several months and this position is responsible for a great deal. So don't get too focused on the minutia uh, in interviews or even in your vetting process of candidates. Try to keep in mind the big picture of what's best for Deal With Glendon School District. Uh, keep in mind what your criteria are, what you're really truly hoping to accomplish. It's a tough job and I think we talked about during the criteria phase, every single thing that was listed on that was important because every single thing on that list is part of a superintendent's job. And yet every candidate is going to bring strengths to this process and strengths to this position. So your job as a board is to advocate what not goes fit what you're looking for in your superintendent. Um, incomplete notes, I know we talked a little bit about that. That uh, that ties back to being able to remember a little bit about each candidate. Depending upon how many resumes and applications you're going to go through, I'll tell you that after a while, you kind of start to forget who was what and why and who really stood out in this area. So we do encourage board members to jot down certain things about candidates. Um, candidate C, for example, uh, special education license. Candidate J, um, years of experience, superintendent, mid-size schools, consolidated district experience. If there are things that you think resonate more for you as a board member, jot those things down. So when it comes time to discuss the candidates, you can draw on those quite quickly. Uh, because if you try to do it from memory, it's going to be tough. And don't write down things that you are not allowed to consider in the application process. I think the example I gave last time is uh, don't jot down if someone's wearing a crucifix necklace. Well, if you see anything in their application that indicates religion or marital status or anything like that, I wouldn't take notes about those things because those aren't to be considered when you weigh uh, the candidate's qualifications for your position. And then finally, the last one is to don't accept the wrong fit. That is on the front page of our Hiring Rights Superintendent booklet. And uh, it simply is, don't accept the wrong fit. If it's not good for your district, then you don't have to do anything. Don't rush the decision because you're not obligated to hire someone. You can get an interim. If an interim superintendent can get you through a year while you reconduct the search, you're certainly welcome to do that. So don't feel pressured to hire someone if it's not right for your district. Any questions on common interview mistakes?
I have a quick question, Barb. For the, any of the notes that the board members take, is that something that's going to be collected? And it will be in that candidate's file, you know, in the future?
That's a great question. No, we do not collect those. Uh, there is an area, and I talked a little bit to Lindsay about this today. When you vet your candidates, you can do it in person at the district office and take hard copy notes. Or you can put your comments in our database. And when you review the candidates electronically, there's a notes section where you are the only person that will ever see those notes. That's an online way of keeping notes. We don't have access to those. MSBA cannot see the notes that you take on folks. Um, so even though they're electronic, we don't collect them because we don't want people saying that that was used by MSBA in any way to help you select the best candidates. And then your notes, when you keep them, those are personal notes. We encourage you to shred them when the process is over. Okay, there will be some evaluation forms that you'll use when you interview candidates. Let's say you have 15 questions. Uh, you'll be able to evaluate each answer by each candidate with either it exceeds my expectations, it meets my expectations, or it doesn't meet my expectations of what a good answer would be for this question. Those results are tallied and those results are collected and kept by MSBA. So those, those would be tallied. Uh, but your personal notes, no. Okay, thanks Laura. Any other questions on interviewing there? Okay, interview questions is the next section. It's a quite long section, page 28 to 34. 34. There are 178 possible questions. There are also hundreds of other questions which you may choose to use with the DGF search. These are only meant to be suggestions. There are boards that afford to come up with questions entirely on their own. Uh, we really encourage you to customize the questions you're asking to get to the heart of what you're trying to learn about these candidates. We did however, want to save you the time if there are categories that you want to delve into. And you can see that they are brought out by that. Some of these questions are ones that I pulled out and sent you as possibilities in that packet. But maybe you went through here already. And if there was just a couple of questions you really liked, maybe you put a circle by it. When we start talking about questions later on this evening, um, I want you to go back to this. If there are any areas that you felt could be stronger. If you don't like the phrasing in these questions, it is up to you to identify and finalize what you want to ask because this is your search. You'll see that many of these are open-ended questions. You try to ask only those. Um, you don't want to ask yes, no questions because it's too easy to just give you a very short answer. You want people to expand on their thoughts around these questions. Uh, some great questions are also, you know, give me an example of a time that you, or you know, what's your philosophy and how might you implement that? Or something like that, that really, really gets into identifying, are they a good fit for you or are they not? So I'm not going to go through all these questions because there are so many. I think we came up with about 27 questions for DGF that are possibilities. But don't discount all of the ones that are in the training packet. Nor discount all of the ones that are existing in your head right now. Because again, you know your district far better than we do. And if there are things that you want to ask about or things you want to phrase differently, that is the board's call. All right, any questions on the questions at this point? We'll dive into the specifics again later on tonight. All right, page 35. I mentioned briefly that candidate, if they manage their time well, are able to ask you questions as well. And here are some possibilities. I mean, right now, you just, you don't know what a candidate is going to ask, but very often it is um, around these topics. Uh, might be finances or strategic planning, or how you dealt with the pandemic, or what your vision for the district is. Uh, what opportunities or challenges exist. You can learn a lot about your applicants by the questions that they ask you. And so we like to leave at least 10 minutes in the one-hour interview for them to ask you questions. It's always worked that way. If someone's long-winded, they might not get done in time to ask you questions. Uh, if someone is very succinct, they could have a half hour to ask you questions. You never quite know. But these are just some possibilities. And so you could think through if they ask about the strategic plan or if they ask about our building project, you could predetermine who on the board Lindsay might hand that stuff off to. She'll be facilitating an interview as board chair and she'll want to know sort of what areas each of you may want to respond to if the candidate asks about something. You also though, want to feel comfortable adding to one another's answers. Uh, I think it's really good when a candidate watches the board work together. You know, they want to know how you communicate with one another. Uh, if you are comfortable building on each other's ideas. And so I think it's, it's good when you answer the candidate's interview questions. It's good if you add things. If you think of something that you want to add to another answer, please feel free to do so. Uh, that kind of communication makes a great impression, I think, on candidates during the interview process. All right, so that's just a possibility. And it's ask all kinds of things because they're interviewing you as well, as you know. Now, one of the things that I know we talked about already was the fact that the board will do a second round of reference checks right between the first round and second round of interviews. MSBA does reference checks on all candidates as part of our vetting process. Uh, once the 11th has come in, uh, we spend maybe three, four days identifying who we think are the strongest. And then we spend some more time digging into those candidates. We call them, we talk to them, we check their references uh, before we present them to you as the strongest field that we feel exists. Um, you though, as a board, have some responsibility to do due diligence on the final candidates, whether it's two or three. Here are some typical questions. Uh, we have a set word document of eight to 12 possible questions. You'll want to select one person on your board to make those reference check calls between round one and round two. Uh, it should be the same person making those calls. Again, so there's consistency in what you're asking. You don't want to go off on tangents, just like through this whole process. Want to make sure it's a fair comparison. So if you're asking three candidate or three questions of references for each candidate, the same person will ask all three of those questions in their phone calls. That makes sense, right? I don't think it is very often, um, because our process is really thorough. Sometimes though, a reference might be more comfortable sharing something with a fellow board member, for example, than they may have shared with an MSBA representative. So that's why we say you should make the calls. It confirms almost every single time you already know about the candidate. Um, if they're listed as a reference, they are probably going to say very good things. And yeah, I think it is in the best interest of the district to make that round of calls. Did we speak in our planning meeting about who on the board might make the reference check calls between round one and round two? Does anyone remember talking about that during the planning meeting?
I have in my book, Laura, I don't know if you remember this, but I have you written down.
There you go.
She's our HR.
She's got HR experience. Laura, would you be able to give me a few reference checks?
Okay. Thank you, Laura. That usually is part of the planning discussion. Laura's going to do it. That's great. Any questions Laura right now?
What was that? I, I don't have any questions I can. Yes.
Oh, are you good, are you good with being our reference checker?
Yeah.
I had you written down in the book. Would you, would you be able to do that?
Yep.
Awesome. There you go Barb. There's our lady.
Terrific, very much Laura. And thank you for having that written down Lindsay. That helps a lot. So as the time gets closer, I'll present you with some ideas, those eight to 12 questions. And then you can all share with Laura what questions you feel are the strongest. Or if you want to change or add your own questions, that's great. Uh, it doesn't need to be a really long drawn-out process. Just three or four questions for your top three candidates. Doesn't take very long, but it is a very good confirming step for a board to take um, before they go into the round two interviews. Laura would then during deliberations, after you've concluded your finalist interviews, Laura would provide you with the results of her conversations. So she'll share with the board, I spoke to three references for all three of these people. Here's what I learned and provide a summary um, to the board to aid in your deliberations of who you'd like to make an offer to. All right, let's move on to debating in public. I know I mentioned this during the training session. I possibly mentioned it in the planning meeting because it is so important. Um, because you are discussing these candidates' qualifications and interviews in public, online, whether it's recorded or being livestreamed. We recommend over and over again to keep your conversations and deliberations positive. Some people will interview better than others. Some people will look better on paper than others. Some will have, um, if you're collecting feedback from stakeholders, some will have stronger feedback than others. It's really important to focus on strengths when you are discussing their attributes in public. Keep in mind that after the first round and the second round, these names are public. So it's not like you're trying to talk about candidate X and say where their strengths and opportunities for growth are. You're talking about people. Okay, these are people who have um, put themselves out there because they want the job of superintendent of Deal With Glendon. So when you are debating their strengths, uh, we'd like you to focus on that. We don't feel there is much necessity to focus on the negatives. Um, for example, if it seemed nervous, I don't think you need to mention that in your deliberations. Uh, you could point out that the candidate seemed extremely comfortable without saying that someone else seemed really nervous. That makes sense? Just how you frame it will make a difference. There's a possibility that these candidates will see you deliberating their interview skills. They can tune in depending upon how you conduct this. If you're livestreaming it, they're done with their interview, they could get on their computer and they could watch you potentially discuss them and discuss their competition. So we always ask for empathy, that you put yourselves in their shoes. And you remember that you would like to be treated well if people were critiquing you publicly. And um, they want the job. Uh, none of them would have put themselves through the rigor of applying for superintendent position if they didn't want the job. So when you read through this, I think I'll go back to common sense again. Um, and the other word would be respect. Speak about the candidate respectfully. They put a lot on the line. Um, they may have positions that their communities and their board members now know that they are potentially looking for another job. That uh, that's a risk in and of itself. And so I'm confident that your board will deliberate their qualifications professionally and kindly. Um, but especially. But especially in today's environment, since so much of this is virtual and accessible online, that you just deliberate carefully. Okay, I'm not going to belabor the point. We've seen it go the other direction sometimes, and it's unfortunate. It leaves a bad taste in the mouth of the candidate and even potentially the new hire. Because they may listen to how you speak about people that have really just done their best. Might not have been perfect, but they've done their best. So any questions right now on debating in public? I think if you read through this, you will have a real good idea of what is and isn't. Yes, sir?
Question back on the references. What's the legality of, for some reason, any of us happens to know citizens or staff at a school where they came from? Are we able to talk with them at all or not at all?
That's a really great question. Thank you for bringing that up. I'll tell you this, the minute these names go public, people are going to be whispering in your ear about all kinds of stuff. They'll have opinions, they'll have Googled people. There'll be a lot of rumors shared with you. Our advice is to thank people for their input and then just file it away. Because you don't want to be someone who makes a decision based on a rumor. One, that is illegal to discriminate against someone because of hearsay or word of mouth. But I'll guarantee you, you're going to be lobbied. And you're going to be lobbied for candidates, and you're going to be lobbied against candidates. It'll put you in a tough spot. But our advice is to simply listen, thank them, but don't engage in any dialogue, don't ask for more information. Don't, don't go digging for dirt. Because in today's world, you can learn just about anything on anybody online. So be careful with that information. Make your decision based on the application that you have in front of you, on MSBA's recommendation of strong candidates. Our service providers such as Lee are very plugged into the administrative world of K-12 education. And they work with us real closely to help us avoid promoting a candidate for you that wouldn't be a good fit perhaps because of some areas that because of our connections have been verified not to be strengths. But I wouldn't put my stock in people who are bending your and trying to influence your decision. You'll have interviews. You know, you can make a great decision on someone based on the interviews. You're doing the reference checks. The reference folks will give you their honest opinion about why this person's a great candidate. They'll have an opportunity to tell you if they don't think that they are potentially cut out for it. But weigh that information carefully. I just said all kinds of stuff. I was going to say, Lee, do you have anything to add to that? You've had far more experience in that area than me.
Well, I think that to get back to the original question, the issue of Kent, is it a right for you to contact somebody that you know? Or if somebody from a district that a candidate comes from sees it, reads about it, if they contact you, how does that work? The, Barb was absolutely on the money. Your names go public, somebody in the audience will be Googling them. They'll be, the unions will be contacting each other. All of those things are natural, that's an organic connection all the time. But it, you don't want to buy your formal process, which is do the connections. But if you know somebody, you can't ignore it. But I would say follow advice really carefully about what you can ask, what you can't ask, and focus on the positives and the negatives.
Thank you, Lee. That was a great question, and it was one of those really tricky ones because we're human. And people want to tell you what you think, what they think. And you'll want to potentially dig into some of the backgrounds of these folks. Just keep it high level, remember it's big picture, and don't get mired in minutia, because it can just be a rabbit hole. And it will waste your time individually, and it could potentially waste the board's time. Any other question? Yes, sir?
Yeah. After we're done interviewing, Kent, what is the process to start the debate? I mean, do we wait, do we start the debate right after the last interview? Or do we wait for a special meeting? How's that go?
Great question. We'll take a half hour break after the conclusion of the last interview. I think that's what I planned in here, usually about a half hour. One, you're going to need a break, because you've got either six people, six hours worth of information in your head, or you've got three hours worth of it. So you need a break, get up, walk around, bite to eat. MSBA in the meantime will be compiling the results of those. Where I said you'll have it exceeds, meets, or doesn't meet my expectations for each question that they answer. So we're going to tally those in that half hour and then provide that to you as a guideline. So you can see as a board, as a collective of six people, we are leaning toward this person, or based on our scores, we're leaning away from this person. So you'll see those things. We will not rank the candidates for you and say, here's your number one, two, and three candidate. We aren't going to do that, because once you start ranking people, that becomes public data and is available through a data request. Plus, when you have indicated subjectively whether it exceeds, meets, or doesn't meet your criteria for a strong answer, that's still subjective. So we don't want to get into quantifying people with numbers and assigning ranks. But we will use that half hour and send that back to you at the board in front of you during deliberations. And then board members will start by saying, okay. Lindsay will facilitate the conversation, and she'll say, well, we just heard from six very strong candidates. I'd like to open it up for thoughts on where we stand and who you might be leaning for. You can then choose, if you want to, to take each candidate one at a time and say, well, why don't we start with candidate Suzie Smith? Who would like to share some of the things they, they feel would make her a good fit for DGF? And then you can like share two or three strengths. She was really good at this, or you really enjoyed her answer on this. And then you could go around the room, and all six of you give some strengths for maybe all six candidates. That's one way of doing it. And we figure this out on the 25th to finalize it. Another way is Lindsay opens it up for where are people sitting? Is there any consensus? Or how do you feel that you might personally be leaning toward where there's some exceptionally strong candidates? And then you could share, well, I really liked Jim and Kelly and Jennifer. I thought they all did extremely well, and I'm comfortable with their, their responses to the questions. And you start to see if a consensus emerges. I've seen it done both ways. Some boards do like to at least identify the strengths of each candidate, so you have a chance to say something positive about all six. And then you could say, perhaps Lindsay would say, well, now that we've mentioned some of the things we saw that were highlights, is there anyone who'd like to share if they have a top two or three candidates? If you needed to narrow it down, which direction are you leaning? And then one of you would speak up, and then someone else would speak up. And eventually, she's going to need all six of you to speak up and indicate who you're leaning toward and what. You'd be surprised how quickly sometimes the consensus emerges, that there is a clear three to take to the final round. That happens more often than not. Other times, there's a clear two, and there's discussion about the remaining two or three. If you really truly get stuck, and if you want three candidates, we did talk about why three candidates is a good final number. One of the best reasons for it is just in case somebody drops out, you still have two candidates instead of one. But if you're going to go with a final three, if you're, if you're really, I won't say stuck, but if you're really debating between who could be the third spot, then it might help to identify who is stronger in the area of collective bargaining, for instance, because that's one of the criteria. Or who between those two folks is strongest in maybe the soft skills and the collaboration and the trust that we're looking to build. You could do a tiebreaker by getting a little bit into, I won't say weaknesses, because we're trying to stay away from that. But occasionally that does happen, where someone may have less experience in budgeting at the administrative level. Well, then that would lean you toward your candidate perhaps. But you'll find out consensus comes more readily than you think it might, at least in the first round, when you have six. Did I answer your question about how to deliberate, how that happens once you've? Yeah? Okay.
Yeah, you did.
Thank you.
Barb, when you just mentioned that too, and discussing that, you were naming names now. When we have the six, can we name names in our discussion then, or do we still have to go A, B, C?
Absolutely. Yep, you name names even if January 25th, because January 25th will be meeting, and we'll be presenting the candidates we feel are strongest, and you'll be discussing with us candidates that you feel are strong that might not be in our top six. Once you make a motion to offer interviews to candidates A, B, C, X, Y, Z, once that motion is seconded and passed, then Lindsay will read the names of those six people. So that night it goes public. And then we immediately pick up the phone, and we call those six people for you and let them know that you would like to interview them for the position. Are they still interested? And then we schedule those based on the, the schedule that we have in front of us. 99% of the time, all six people will say yes. Occasionally, someone says, no, thank you. They took another job or something like that.
Barb, just to clarify, we debate using E, B, C, D, and E. But after, you know, after we've come to a consensus in the board meeting, then, then I will name who the six are.
Yes.
After we figure that. Okay, is that what you're wondering, Ronnie? I just got, I was kind of confused there too.
Well, I, I thought that we could only name just the final three. We, I've heard now you can name the six in our discussion. But aren't we still recording these meetings?
Yes.
Not till there's action.
That act, that Data Practices Act, remember, says that once someone's named a finalist, their name becomes public. And a finalist is someone that you have selected to be interviewed. So you will be doing those first six people. So they're a finalist. The statute doesn't get hung up on like semifinalists and finalists. But once they're selected for an interview, then their names are public. So you'll make the motion using the alpha letters, A, B, C. You'll pass the motion based on A, B, C. And then Lindsay can say, okay. The candidates we're interviewing are, and you read six names. And then we pick up the phone, we call those six people, we ensure that they're still interested. We get them slotted in for January 28th and 29th. And then you're ready to go. But it is, you are talking specifically about people. And that's when the Googling begins, the night that you announce those six people. Then it starts. And that's why we did not too much time to elapse. You know, you're, you're choosing your finalist, six or so, January 25th. You're looking at making an offer to someone like February 3rd, I think was the timeline, wasn't it? Yeah, the second round is February 2nd. So on the 3rd, you're hoping that you're going to designate. I know we talked about this in the planning meeting also. Who is going to be calling and negotiating with the superintendent?
David will be doing our, David will be doing the negotiating.
There you go. So David will be picking up the phone the night of the 2nd or the day of the 3rd to discuss the contract. And if you are successful in that, David, then you would approve the contract at your regular meeting on February 8th. So not very much time elapses, and that's on purpose. Because if you name your six finalists, and you don't make an offer to someone until six weeks later, there's an awful lot of nonsense that can happen in six weeks. And so we try to keep it close so that you don't end up bogged down in those rabbit holes. So it's, it's tight. Did that answer your question, okay about using names?
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll review all of this on January 25th. We'll finalize the questions we're going to be asking. We'll finalize the schedule. And who the six people are that you're going to talk to over those two days. We'll have you also look at the round two questions and schedule, and finalize those things on the 29th. So there is quite a bit to do that, even on top of selecting who you want to go to the round two. No, 25th, it's going to be training and prep for round one, got it? And then at the end of the interviews on round one, we'll finalize everything for round two, because they have a date later. The rest of this training packet, I'm not going to go through because it's the superintendent contract. This is a sample. It is a model contract as developed in partnership with MASA. MSBA and MASA worked together to come up with a contract that both organizations felt was fair. And so this is one that you could use as a template. However, I'm sure that your district has its own contract. Perhaps there are things that you want in there that are in our model contract. That's entirely a local decision. But the remainder of this packet is the sample superintendent contract. So I wanted to be sure you had that in front of you as well. That is it for the generic interview training. We could move right into now, so the specifics for Dealworth, Glendon Felton. Some of this will make more sense, I think, in context of what we're going to talk about next. But before moving on, I want to make sure that there aren't any other questions at this point in the meeting. All right. Seeing none, I'll move into the second part of tonight's meeting, which is to review the stakeholder report, some of the details that will come to light for the round one interviews. First thing I want to do is say congratulations on listening sessions. There was some really good input received, I think, on top of that qualification survey, that report you already have from our last meeting. You got a lot of good input. Your stakeholders are very invested in the success of the search. And I think they were very honest with their thoughts and their opinions. You can see on here that the online survey was open for about two weeks or so. Yep, about 18 days. And it had 45 responses. And then we also conducted the two listening sessions via Google Meet, and that was with the staff and also with the community. So this, I'm assuming you already had a chance to review. I'm only going to review a couple of highlights, because I know that you have this here in front of you. And I want to point out, first of all, that it's always, always really encouraging to hear from folks what good things are happening in the district. That was really enjoyable to read. Clearly, people feel that the teaching and support staff are a strength of the district, and that they care very much about students and the kids being successful. There were some great comments about the remodeling project and the reconfiguration of the grades. I think you mentioned last time to me that change is always hard. And no one is completely comfortable with a new way of doing things. And when you're remodeling not just a building, but you're reconfiguring your grade levels, that is a lot for people to take in. And there were some really positive comments about that. Also, I want to congratulate you on handling the pandemic well. The feedback from folks on that with the district has been very upfront and done the best they can in a difficult situation. So kudos on all the positive comments about the things that are going well in the DGF district. The question about the challenges over the next five years always brings out, I think, people's deepest frustrations. And the fact that the surveys, especially online, are anonymous can sometimes allow folks to say things that they might not say if it was in a focus group face to face. So please take all of the suggestions about what challenges lie ahead with a grain of salt. I will say that I was very impressed with some of the things that emerged in terms of the challenges are already things that you as a board identified as hiring criteria back when we had the planning meeting. Okay? For instance, one of the ones that was mentioned in terms of challenges is a lack of trust within the district, within school administration, teacher, staff, et cetera. That was mentioned enough times where it was probably the more common challenge that we faced. And when you think about the hiring criteria, one of the top things that you identified as a board, two months ago almost, was that you wanted someone who develops trust and works collaboratively with diverse groups of stakeholders. So that was really good to see. I'll let you read through all the rest of these as well. But I thought, again, it was a positive thing, that if there are concerns that people identified as part of the listening session survey or the online sessions with as part of the listening session survey or the online sessions with Google Meet, is that you've anticipated some of those by requiring the hiring criteria to address them as well. Okay? So I want to talk then about the qualities that were necessary for the superintendent to step into the role next. What really stood out to us when you're looking at this is the fact that it revolves around leadership and how people might be defining leadership in your district. When they were using words like communicator, transparent, listening, et cetera, what that tells us is that soft skills will be extremely important to the stakeholders of DGF. There's a lot to be in a leader. You always have to make popular decisions. Leaders are required to have very thick skin, because it's not always, the answers aren't always what people want to have. And yet, I think people are looking to lead now more than ever, perhaps, for those soft skills of building cohesion and encouraging people and being a good listener and making tough decisions in context of having heard people. Sometimes just feeling heard does a great deal for folks. So I saw soft skills as something that you'll be able to, I think, pick fun in your interviews. And so that might be something that you'll want to pay particular attention to or even ask the questions around when it comes to round one and round two of your interviews. Oh, the fact that it is a consolidated community or consolidated school district isn't unusual, but there were people that pointed to the challenges of having three different communities with one united school district. So it's also something that you can consider perhaps asking around their experience in consolidated districts, or how they might relate to and build trust within three different communities as part of their charge to be superintendent in DGF. And then finally, I thought the final question about what would you say to the new superintendent if you got a chance? It was very interesting, the number of people who used the words kids, student-centered, students' best interest, and even here, the five quotes that we happened to mention, they all have the words students, kids, or great kids. And so they are a tremendous asset in your district. And it was really fun to see people point out how student-centered your district is and how people put the wellbeing of the student as it should be first. Really nice positive note to end that theme on, so. Are there questions on the stakeholder report? I didn't see any surprises. I mentioned that when we do the listening sessions, sometimes something bubbles up to the top that perhaps we haven't thought about and we'll want to build a question or two around in your interviews. Nothing in here was surprising to me based on what I know and what I've heard from the board in terms of what you want to address, but I also want to make sure that I open it up for any questions or observations from the board on the listening sessions themselves. Anyone?
I had one, a couple of things just stood out for me that I'd like to see more information on from them, but we're not going to get it, but that was, you know, talking about the building and realignment and they're thinking that we're not addressing the most urgent needs, and I don't quite know what they mean. And then they're also talking about not extra rooms at the high school, and I don't know if they understand that the career academy is going to take the place of a lot of the rooms that you need, so. Just a couple of comments I saw that are a little questionable.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree with Ronnie, I have the same. Yeah, I had the same kind of thing, Barb and I talked today, and I said a couple of those things also stood out to me, that I just think there was a lack of maybe understanding of that, on those things, and we probably won't get any answers to that, but.
I think, to that, to me, it's just the most emotional type of.
Correct.
Of answers. It's the thing that's, you know, right on your sleeve that tends to be what ends up as your high number of things. And I wasn't surprised by any of that.
Yeah.
Things that people are most emotional about.
Yeah.
People person thing, I'm thinking, you know, a little bit of that comes to from, you know, they try to do opposite of what the last person is type of thing, you know, type of thing, and they leave, so that's where a lot of the comments come from. But, I mean, I believe in transparency. When I first got on Thursday years ago, I thought the board or the superintendent wasn't transparent with us, and I made it a point that I was always going to tell the public everything I could and give them all the information they needed to know. So I believe in transparency.
Any other questions or comments on the listening sessions? I think that you, as a board, have done a really good job of providing opportunities for your stakeholders to have a voice. I know that you put a lot of effort, the first survey that went out, not only was available online for two or three, four weeks, but you also mailed out letters and hard copies of surveys to the entire district. This survey, the listening sessions, you sent out lots and lots of communications. I know the district staff did a great job sending out emails and making sure the link was available to take the survey online. There was a postcard that went out telling people, go take the survey. So you have done a very good job of making a concerted effort to get people's input. And so I think stakeholders should feel very good about the opportunities they had, whether they took advantage of the opportunities or not. You, as a board, did a very good job of allowing them the chance to put their voice forth in the superintendent's search, so kudos on that. If there's no questions on the stakeholder report, I'm going to move on then to the round one interview schedule, which is a tentative schedule. I have placed in here the times for January 28th and 29th, based on the planning meeting and the fact that you said the interviews would start at 1:00 on the 28th and 9:00 on the 29th. The agenda will be the same for that meeting. In fact, it's one big, long meeting. At the close on Thursday, you're going to continue the meeting, you won't adjourn it. You'll actually continue it till the next morning, and then you'll start up right away again with the next interview at 9:00. These are one-hour interview slots. If you feel you want them shorter or longer, we can do that, but this is pretty standard to conduct a one-hour interview with each candidate and then have a 15-minute break between candidates to allow time for, you know, a break for you as board members, for candidates to log on, or if they're in person, to do it that way. But one hour is pretty standard, and so that's what I put in here. I also then put the half-hour break on Friday, which will allow MSBA to tally up your responses to that exceeds meets or doesn't meet, responses to all the questions. So I wanted to know if you had thoughts on this proposed schedule? I have asked if you could meet five minutes before, simply to call the meeting to order, so you get started right at 1:00 and right at 9:00. But if anyone has scheduling conflicts where that extra five minutes is not okay, we can slide everything back by five minutes.
All right, good?
Good.
I have a quick question. Is the, are the interviews going to be held at the district office?
Great question. I would say right now, another thing we'll need to consider is the pandemic. Depending on what the MDH and CDC guidelines are, you may or may not be able to have them in the building. So that's something that you should think about between now and January 25th. In the old days, pre-pandemic, they were always held at the district office, and it was an open meeting and people showed up and listened. Because of the pandemic, you could choose to still have them there, knowing that there may be some candidates who can't or are not comfortable coming into your building for the interview, because they'll have to have their mask off in order to answer all of your questions. You'll need to be spaced out far enough where it's actually legal for social distancing. So you'll want to allow for folks to participate virtually if they choose that. You also could choose to hold all of the interviews virtually, so it's a level playing field for everybody. There may be people who need to do it via Google Meet simply because they're overcommitted elsewhere, or they might live out of the country. Lee led a search for us a couple of years ago, where one of the candidates was in Brazil, is that right? Yeah, led a school in Brazil who wanted to return to Minnesota, so conducted their interview virtually from Brazil. So you may have candidates that are far away to drive to Dealworth for the interview. But that's something I think that maybe you should talk about a little bit, is how are you feeling about conducting interviews virtually versus in the district office? I'll tell you this, that if you conduct them virtually, if I were a candidate right now interviewing with the school board, the only board I'd feel connected to would be Laura, because I can see Laura, I see her face, I see her facial expressions, and she's not wearing a mask. The rest of you, I don't feel connected to, I can't see your face, and you have a mask on half your face. So if you're going to do virtual interviews, I would really encourage you to think about each of you having a device in front of you, so that the camera is catching you close up, and if you have questions or you answer questions, it's much clearer because you're on your own mic. So that's something that you will want to think through. There are pros and cons to both. MSBA will be joining you at the interviews virtually. We are not sending staff or service providers into districts right now because of the pandemic. So I'll stop talking for a moment, and maybe Lindsay, you want to have a conversation with the board about initial thoughts around how are you going to conduct interviews? We did every interview last spring virtually. There were no in-person interviews from March 12th on, and they went very, very well.
Thanks, Barb. Yeah, Barb contacted me just today with a few things, and she mentioned this, so it's something I really didn't think about, but you really miss that personal connection when you cannot see someone's entire facial expression. You know, obviously, we're in a pandemic, we would rather have these people here. I guess my thought is, do we want to bring our computers and sit in this big room that's been reserved for us, or would people rather be in their homes doing interviews? Or if you're like my house that has dogs that constantly bark, maybe I want to come here and just set up because I know it's going to be quiet. So I'll open it up for discussion and whatever anybody feels comfortable doing.
I guess initially, my thought is, when we did our principal interviews and stuff like that, we didn't appear in this room, and I don't know, I kind of liked the in-person itself, but I guess whatever George decides is.
I mean, I think it'd be nice to be together with our individual computers, and one thing I would say too is, if you're remote, sometimes the internet connection's not the best, and you end up with that delay, which, I mean, it will work. We've been all dealing with delay, and there would be a delay, no doubt, but, you know, like, for instance, Sandy sometimes.
Yeah.
You know, when she was at home, you know, sometimes the seconds are, sometimes I might just crash, you know, if I wasn't close to my router, so I don't know. Being here, I would think the internet connection would be really good.
Even if we had the option of us seven being together and then doing the interviews virtually, maybe?
Yeah. And that's what I think Barb's saying is, none of them will probably come to us, how do we want to do it? I would be fine taking these tables, and then we need to spread them out so we can keep our masks off the whole time.
Yeah.
This room has been reserved for us, so no one should be coming in and out. So, I mean, I think that would be probably doable, probably best.
Are we okay to keep our masks off if we're spread out far enough to school?
Yeah, I believe so.
Very least, you know, we're able to take them off if we speak if we want.
Oh, absolutely.
I guess I would like our whole group kind of together in one building or one room.
Yeah. Because, I mean, we could spread out, you could have a table there, and someone over there, and over there, you know, and we have that room too, so I think we can spread out. Are you, are you guys comfortable with that?
That would be my preference.
I'd prefer to be in the person, like, the seven of us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Contropania feels more divisive.
Yeah. More united to an air approach.
Absolutely. I can just tell you, you know, between the UPS man and my kids at home doing online learning and the dogs, that I would prefer just to be here. So Laura, what are your thoughts on?
I think with all of us being, you know, in the same room, and then interviewing every candidate virtually, I think that would make it, you know, an even playing field. I can see how it might give the person an advantage if they are in person, just, you know, but I can say that if I was interviewing with the six of you staring at me, you guys are kind of fuzzy, it's hard to understand you. So if I were the candidate, you know, it, I think Barb's suggestion for having our individual laptops and so the person can, you know, see us a lot more clearly, I think that's the great way to go.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Well, Barb, that's our plan. We'll each bring our computer, and we'll be in the media center together, and the candidates can beam in virtually.
Okay. That sounds good. Lee, did you have a comment you wanted to add to that conversation?
I just wanted to share that, after we've done three of these virtual interview processes at the end of last year, the individual computers changes everything. If you put a large group the way you are now, it just doesn't work very well. So I think Laura's on the money, I think you made the right choice.
Will a candidate have the option to be in person if they prefer it?
I'd say that's up to.
Just stick to that.
I think it would be better, I think Laura's point is that, I mean, it's hard not to treat somebody differently that's in person. I think it'd be better, and, you know, more, just be fair.
Just keep it the same. Keep it the same. Okay.
They don't have to travel with all of these issues and their timelines, and everybody's busy, and they're working most likely, that's why.
I'd say that would hurt me.
Yeah.
It would be any or whatever.
You know, that brings up another great question. The administrators had reached out to me and asked me how they could be, if they're going to need to be involved with this process. I was speaking to our technology director, and he said the last time they did interviews, you know, they all like did something different. Someone did a tour of the towns we live in, someone did a tour of the buildings. I'm assuming, Barb, none of that will happen during the search because of the pandemic, correct?
I would say it probably won't happen, with your interviews coming up in about four weeks, that's pretty quick. And that typically is a part of the round two interviews. If you're going to give tours around the town and tours of the building and have a host for each of your finalists, that's usually round two, when there's only three people to do that with. But because of the pandemic, again, last spring, none of that happened. There was a district that put together a visual tour of the buildings, they walked onto the camera and said, here's the district office, wave, you know, and they put together their own tour, per se, and sent that to the three finalists, and I think they enjoyed it. That's an option if you feel you would like to do that, but as far as in-person tours and stuff, yeah, it didn't happen last spring, and I would highly doubt that'll happen on February 2nd for your district. It's unfortunate, but it's.
I like the suggestion of them making a video. That would be kind of nice, just to kind of, you know, introduce them to the district staff and maybe just some people around the building, so it'd be kind of nice, so. We'll think about that.
That sounds good.
If I might, Madam Chair, any candidate that is serious about your position is going to come to DGF area and go through, or they've got ties, or they were a cobbler or a dragon or something, they probably have a connection, and if they don't, they're going to come there, whether you invite them or not, and check it out. If they have a spouse, they're going to have questions about housing and all kinds of things, and they're going to want to do that on their own. As they're doing their background work on you as a district, they're going to do the background work on you as a community.
All right, thank you. I think that's a good call to do all six interviews and have three interviews the same and have them virtual. I know almost every candidate, gosh, I probably worked with 40 people last spring that were candidates, every one of them became very comfortable interviewing over computers. So by having that be the same, I think that's a very fair way to do it. If they were to come in person, the other thing you can keep in mind is, you would be so spread out. People like people to come in person because they want to shake their hand and they want to look them in the eye. Well, if you're sitting that far apart, you're not going to get to shake anybody's hand, first of all, because that's probably still not going to be a protocol a month from now. And eye contact, if you're in the same room, is going to be really hard if you're spaced out as much as you're talking. You'll make far more eye contact the way I'm looking at Laura right now, so I think that's a really good call. Keep in mind that the Open Source Law is going to still apply even if you're all meeting there. So you can have up to so many people in your space. It changes on occasion, so I'm not going to give you a number, but at one time, you can have up to 10 people gathering if you had X big of a room. That still means that that isn't enough, and so you'll need people to be able to access it online. So. So the yellow parts on here are what needs to be filled in and we would fill in the candidates' names for you once we get those scheduled night of January 25th. And I assumed Google Meet is the platform you would continue to use. I made that assumption by putting that all meetings will be held via Google Meet. And that whether or not you livestream them or record them would need to be clarified for this because this agenda is what would also go public with the candidates' names and then the parameters around how the meeting is going to be held. So someone will eventually let me know if it's going to be livestreamed on YouTube or Facebook or if you are recording it. So I can get that correct on this schedule.
Yes, I just talked to, oh, sorry Barb, I talked to John and he thought the best option would probably be the recording and then put it up under the superintendent search link on our, on our district website.
Okay.
That's what he, that was the initial thought, but I mean, we certainly can continue that conversation. I know you have mentioned to me earlier today that live streaming would be an option. I'm just not sure how that would happen with all seven of us plus the person that's we're interviewing with everybody's computers. It might just be best if the meeting is set up by, say, myself being the moderator, record it and then we send it over to our IT and put it under the superintendent search. And we can certainly put it on our Facebook page that people can go watch their interviews if they'd like. I think that would suffice the, for, you know, the requirement.
Yeah. If you have technology problems and then, you know, we're dealing with that during the interview.
Yeah.
It's just the recording seems to happen without me.
Yeah, I agree. All right.
Sounds good. And I will be working then with Brooke to set up six, I'll have to see how she wants to do it. Sometimes we set up six different links for six different interviews and a seventh link for deliberation. Or sometimes it's one big meeting link that people can go in and out of for the entire span of the interviews and deliberations. So that's one thing to think about. I don't know, Lindsay, if you and I should chat how that might work best, but depends on your IT folks. Do you want one meeting link for each interview and a Google Meet interview or link for the deliberations? Or do you want one big, long, open-ended, or maybe two, since it's on two days? Just the technology, we'll want to have sorted out by January 25th. Okay?
I, yep, I will go ahead and email John and ask him what would be more, most effective for him to be able to post.
I think six individuals would be preferable in the sense that you don't have someone crashing in on, or someone interviewing.
Yeah.
Just even to see.
That's, that's true. Yeah, that's true. I'm kind of thinking, I'm kind of leaning towards your same kind of thought process and then do the deliberations separate. So I mean.
We would deliberate on this.
Yeah, yeah. I would say we put all our computers together, you know, sit here and do everything. Some be a good idea.
That sounds good. And Brooke will need to be the person, either Brooke will need to let people in or it's going to just need to be open with no pre-authorization required so people can watch it. Or if it's being recorded, maybe she opens in the board, MSBA and the candidate. And since you're recording it, maybe she doesn't need to police who's going in and out of the meeting. Think about that. Okay. We'll figure it out, but that is one of those. All right. So I'm going to talk about the interview questions next. And then we're going to conclude the meeting by looking ahead to round two just a little bit. I want to give you a snap out of what round two could look like on February 2nd. But in terms of round one, I categorized by hiring criteria some possible questions. And I say possible because these are some MSBA questions. There's some questions that other districts have used that I thought really fit well within the criteria you've selected. But this is a lot. There's 27 and that is too many for round one. We usually say between 12 and 18 questions. Again, it depends on how long-winded people's answers are. But you really want to have time at the end of them answering questions to be able to turn around and ask you questions of the board. So this is a suggestion. You might want to pick one question from each category or two. Or you might want to come up with your own questions. Maybe there were some in the training packet that you went through already and went, oh, I like that question. I want to ask it. We would encourage you however, to have at least one question relative to hiring criteria. So one from each of these would be important, along with an opening and closing question. I put some general questions in here just because they do tend to get to some issues surrounding leadership or trust or things like that. Maybe there are questions in here that you think are really good, but not for round one. Maybe you want to save them for the second round because your round one questions tend to be a little bit more general. Just a little bit to, to help you figure out who are your top three. Your round two questions, if you think of it like a funnel, round two is where you really drill into the specificity of what you're looking for. All right. And we can even add round two questions following your six interviews because maybe something a candidate said made you want to ask more. And during the interview itself, if you have a list of questions in front of you, and I would say if you're doing these then virtually, that the only person actually asking the question would be Lindsay as board chair. She'll be facilitating the interview and she'll ask each question in order of each candidate. You cannot ask follow-up questions. I know we talked about this during the workshop, but if someone gives a really interesting answer to a question that Lindsay asks up behalf of the board, you can't wave your arm and say, well, wait a minute, tell me more about that. Or wait a minute, you said this, I really am intrigued. Could you expand on that? Because then you are asking candidates different questions and you're not ensuring that it's a level playing field. So you want to make sure that the questions you're going to ask in round one are getting to the big picture. And then you can identify some things maybe after round one to include in round two where you drill down deeper on some things. So I'm going to stop talking. I know I've talked a lot tonight, but I'm going to stop talking and let the board talk through round one questions. You don't want to keep any of these. You don't have to keep any of them. Okay. Other than I would say the first and last questions are good ones. You want a softball to start with. Why are you interested in becoming our superintendent? That's a really good icebreaker. But maybe some of you have HR backgrounds. I think Laura, someone said, do you have an HR background? Maybe there's a better opening question for you, but then you always, the clothes do want to say, what questions do you have for us? So with that, I'm going to mute myself.
Barb, I didn't have a question. Just that you muted yourself.
No, you didn't. I just want to stop talking, allow the board to figure out what you want to ask in round one. I'm taking these up for you. Oh, and I should also mention, we don't go in this order. You know, we don't, if, if you like all three questions in the acts with honesty and ethical manner, we don't ask all of them boom, boom, boom. Whatever you end up choosing as your final questions, again, 12, 15, 18, 20, we're going to mix them up so that if you have two or three questions in one category, category, they are spaced throughout the interview so they're not lumped together. These are only lumped together for convenience sake, but once we put them into the interview format, they'll be mixed up. Okay, Lindsay, it's all yours to lead the board discussion on interview questions.
David's got a question.
Just a follow-up to the idea of the follow-up question. You know, there are times when somebody maybe doesn't understand the question, whether they're nervous or, you know, I think it's appropriate to explain the question if they don't understand it. And otherwise you can have some weird awkward, is that fair?
I, I think that's.
I know it's not perfect.
Yeah. Again, we're all human beings. I think that's a really great point. Thank you for bringing it up. One of the things that has helped, and you could do this if you want to, is when we have the final list of questions, I'll just say there's 15 questions. I can email that to each candidate five minutes before their interview. So they have the questions next to their computer when they are hearing, they'll hear, we read the question, but they can be reading along. So if you want them to have the questions, typically if we were sitting in the boardroom, we'd hand them one when they walked into the room to be interviewed. So we can certainly email it to them right before it starts. So they have it in front of them if that helps. But yes, if for some reason you can tell that they just didn't know what you were asking, Lindsay can certainly say, I'm just going to clarify, this is the question. And then she reads it again verbatim to see if that helps.
I think with the internet and if there's any issues, and we did that with the principal interviews too, is that they had a list of questions and that way, depending on where their brain was going and how nervous they were, they could at least report back to that and have better precise answers.
Yeah, I, I like that idea. I mean, we would give a week in advance too if they come up with it, although, I mean, there's a certain amount of catching somebody, you know, prompt answer and stuff, another thing. I mean, resumes, cover letters and that sort of thing. It gives you a chance to say your piece, but. Yeah, at least having a little bit of chance to be able to, something to formulate thoughts. But that, I think, so that you can understand it in case.
All right. Well, let's kind of, you know, run through these questions. Kind of get a gauge what we'd like to. And you know, some of these questions might be better for round two. I've already written round two on a couple of them. You know, the opening question, you know, Laura, do you have any thoughts? Like Barb said, you have HR experience. I mean, I think it's a great just icebreaker. Like why, why, why do you want to apply for this job? Why, why would you like to come to this school district?
Yeah, I think that that's a perfectly, you know, perfectly fine introduction. So it gives them a chance to, you know, yeah. Get some, maybe a little bit more comfortable because sometimes they're just, you know, they get all, they're anxious and so this way it kind of lets them, you know, get the, get the wiggles out kind of, you know, because it's an easy one. It's just kind of, you know, so I think that that's totally fine.
Okay, the second one here, the second opening question, like Barb said, these aren't going to be in any order, but acts with honesty and an ethical manner with the school board, staff and communities. Is there one that stands out to anyone in particular that you like? Ronnie?
I just checked two and four right now.
I was going to say like two and four.
Two and four?
I mean, I just put them down by initial.
Okay. Yeah, I probably don't want to name the questions. Let's do two and four. Someone will be watching this. They don't have all our questions, so. All right. I, I kind of, I really kind of like number three just because it's one of those, just, you know, I look back when I, you know, interview the construction management companies and I'm like, what's your biggest failure? That was a question I asked. What was your biggest failure and how did you respond to that? It just, it kind of puts your brain into perspective, but I mean, that's just my opinion. Nicole or Brittany?
I like number three.
I've marked two and three.
Okay. David?
I like number three and, but you don't want to ask too many of those questions because then it's, it's, it's a bit of gamesmanship. You know, like to say, you know, what's your biggest weakness? And if you're prepared for it, you say something that's probably not your biggest weakness, but something that you triumphed over. I mean, you're partly trying to see how somebody's going to answer that, what a bugger they are. But, you know, if you have too many of those, then, you know, it gets to be kind of like, we want it all.
Get those down first. Yeah. Oh, I see what you're saying. Amy?
But I do like that.
You know, I guess there's potential for one of these to be like on a phase two interview versus.
Well, maybe we want to put number three because it is more, you know, we're, we're getting down to our finalists. Maybe that should be a second round, possible, possible second round question.
Yeah, number three to be a second round question.
Yeah.
I think you're right because that is more specific. Two and four are a little more broad. I mean, four is a little bit in line with those three. You know, how do you respond to criticism? Kind of invite somebody to tell me.
Yeah.
I've never been criticized before, so.
Yeah. Do we, are we all kind of, Laura, what were your thoughts? What do you, sorry dear, I forgot you were on the screen.
No.
Leave your face to me. I remember you were there. I like the Beatles too, but I like you better.
I, I guess it's a, it's a, it's kind of if you want to have more of an open-ended question or if you want to have someone where they're talking in specifics of certain practices that they've done. You know, give us a specific situation of when you did this, not just how, how do you feel if, you know, people give you a bad critique about something, like it's, it's something where they've actually, where they've actually had to do something. So it just depends on if you want to keep it more vague and then like you said, move it into more specifics into the second round. I think, I mean personally, I like number three the most. But I guess, and that's why, because it's going to like, it's going to tell us how they, you know, what they did in that specific situation.
Would, would you put it as a first round question Laura or a second round? Do you want to kind of rule it out? Strong indicator for us?
I'm sorry. Could you say that again?
Do you think we should put it as a first round question or a second round question? What are, what are your thoughts?
I think, yeah, we could move that to the second round. I would be, yeah, second round is fine with me. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We have a consensus between two and four. Do we want to keep both in there, both of them in? Because, you know, we're not just going to ask one, two, six, seven, eight. You know, we have eight, nine, we have nine. So we're looking at between 12 to, 12 to 15 questions. And I think both of them bring out, would give us a good gauge of, you know, what they feel would make them, you know, fit this position. So I would be comfortable putting both two and four in the question, the first round questions.
Yeah, I think the first question or two is broad enough to cover a lot of ground. I don't think it's just a specific topic.
Yeah. All right. Well, let's for now, you know, we can always come back and revisit, but let's just say for now, we've got one, two and four. Let's go down to the next section here. Everybody go ahead and read through them quickly again because I'm going to do that and then we'll discuss. All right, we're paired with Nicole. Do you have a favorite? Nicole, who wants?
I like six and eight. I live in three.
Okay. Ronnie, do you have a couple favorites or a favorite?
I got six and eight.
Okay. Laura, which, what are your favorite? What numbers?
I guess I like six and seven.
Brittany, what are your favorites?
I like six, seven and eight, but I think seven and eight, I mean, could go around two as well because they're kind of more specific.
David?
I like eight.
Amy?
I like six, seven and eight. And then I guess my thoughts on eight would be round two.
I had seven and then eight as round two. So let's talk about that. So both six and seven kind of talk about the same things. I'm wondering if we could ask Barb or we ourselves kind of reword those two into one question that could go for the first round.
Absolutely.
And then the second round could be eight. Laura, you're a good wordsmith. You could put together six and seven, right?
You bet. What, you want me to like do it on the fly right this second or what?
No, 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 because I don't want, because this is recorded, so we don't want to give away all our questions. But yes, you worded down and it's Barb. We'll, we'll email Barb with our suggestions of our questions. So you wordsmithed that. So we'll have that and then we'll put, round two will be number eight.
Okay.
How many questions are we asking in round two? Is it about the same amount?
I'm, I'm assuming 12, 12 to 15. And we'll get into the second round questions a little bit. You know, Barb suggested if we have goals as a district, that maybe we need to center some of those like around our, our goals. You know, we obviously have a building project going on right now. You know, we've identified that our reserves are lower. Maybe we need to, like, what is your philosophy on that? How can you help us? You know, so we'll get into more maybe DGF, really hurt questions that second round. So great question, Nicole. All right, let's go ahead on the head knowledge, the next one, read those three and we'll talk about it. Ronnie, do you have a favorite in those three, between nine, 10 and 11?
No, to start with, I just chose 10.
That, that's the same one I chose. Nicole, both 10. Laura, what number, nine, 10 or, or 11?
I like nine and 10. You know, I could see maybe nine being the second round.
Okay. Brittany?
I have 10.
David? 10.
I have 10, and then round two, maybe nine.
Okay, all right, well, let's rate that, round two for number nine, and we'll, 10 is in.
Can I just ask Barb a question? If.
You certainly may.
Depending upon how many questions we ask a candidate, if someone is longer-winded, and we don't get to every single question by the time that it's, time's up, you know, how, how do you handle that?
That's interesting. Several years ago, this is the story and the lore of MSBA interviews, several years ago, there was a list of about 16 questions. And the first candidate was so long-winded, that they only got to answer about seven questions. So then what the board did is ask only seven questions of the remaining five candidates, so that it was completely level. And they found out afterwards that that probably was not the wisest decision, because some of the interviews were done in 30 minutes. So what MSBA now recommends is if a candidate runs out of time, that's on them. If a candidate is able to answer all the questions in the time allotted, then you should allow them to do that. Okay, but that's, that's a great question, because if the first person talks too much and only gets through seven questions, oh well, the next person will have the opportunity to answer our all 15, however that works. Did that help, Laura? Okay.
Okay, let's read, go ahead and read 12, 13 and 14. All right. We'll go with Amy first, Amy, what would, what would you?
I like number 12 and 13.
David?
I like 13.
Brittany?
12 and 13.
Laura? Laura, the Beagle up there?
The what?
Your picture's a Beagle. There you are.
For real? Oh.
Yeah, you have a Beagle picture.
I know, my son put it as a screensaver thing, and I don't have the heart to change it.
All right, what did you have?
I noted number 13, and then possibly 12 for round two, since it specifically mentions multiple communities discussing specifics.
Yeah, I guess, okay, Ronnie?
I did 13.
Okay, I had 13 and 12, and I have one as a first round and one as a second. So I think that we could take both of those. Do we feel more comfortable with one or the other being the first round or the second round?
I'm good.
I like 15, just because it's, it's long enough, as for an example. But it's just such a, such a big part of all the, all the back, feedback, feedback that we've gotten, really. This is just a core area, so I think that fits to the heart of that.
Okay, well, why don't we put that as first round, 13, and then the second round? You know, like Nicole mentioned, it has the multiple communities, and maybe they could expand on, on their thoughts on that, so.
There's one coming up, they had two that talked about communities, so we'll have to look.
Oh, okay, yep. Thank you for bringing that up. All right, uh, the next two, 15, 16. All right, David, you're our law man. What, which one do you pick in here?
I don't know, I, I mean, I like 15 in the sense that it gives you a sense of, I mean, differentiate some of the candidates, I think, because, you know, somebody says, well, most important thing is percolant. Somebody might say, I mean, I don't know, gives us a sense of where they're coming from. I guess they both touch on the same thing, I don't favor them. I guess I would pick 15, of course.
Okay, Brittany?
Yeah, I think it's a little broader, so I like 15.
Laura, which one do you like, 15 or 16?
I like 15. I think you can get a better sense of, you know, what they truly feel is most important for that role.
Okay, Nicole?
15.
Ronnie?
I did 15. 16 basically is talking about how do they feel about federal and state laws, or deals with those issues. I don't know if that's as high a priority on our list, but.
Amy? I like 15, because I think it is broad enough to where they're going to outline their priorities as being a superintendent, and whether or not it aligns with what our goals are, so.
Well, that was our first unanimous decision. Well, in this meeting. Go team. Okay, 17, 18 and 18. I have a little thing, and I think they're all fantastic, so I can't wait to read them. All right, Laura, you're, you're number one on this one, what, what do you think?
Um, I like both 17 and 18. Because I think it touches on a little bit different, it's kind of the same things, but in a different, from a different lens. So I like both, 17 and 18.
Okay, Nicole?
Actually, I like 19, I thought it gave an idea more of like their sense of purpose, and maybe their objectives and what they are sensing.
Okay. Sorry, Laura, did I cut you off? Did you have something else to elaborate on?
No, go ahead.
Okay, Ronnie, what are your thoughts?
I did 17 and 18.
Okay. I myself, I did 17 and 18. I like when Nicole said, you get a sense of, you know, what their, what their thoughts are. But I also, I, I kind of would think that number 17 could be like a second round question possibly. Just kind of thinking there's, you know, like, actually being specific to that person that's, you're down to the final three, like, how, how can, you know, what are we going to see from you, how is the community going to be able to see you, and so those are my thoughts. Amy, what are your thoughts?
Mine was the opposite. I thought number 17 is a pretty broad, like PBJ kind of question, which is good for six candidates. Whereas when you get down to three candidates, and you're getting more specific to the several communities that we have to bring together as one. So I was thinking that would be around two.
Number 18, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're saying 18 is second?
18, 18, round two, 17, round one.
Okay, David?
Yeah, I like them all, I, I don't know. I'd probably go with 19 if you put it down to my head.
Let's not do that.
All right, Brittany?
Uh, I just have to write it down, round one for 17 and two for 18.
Okay, so let's go back to number 12, read number 12 again, and then read 17 and 18.
I did the same thing, weren't I?
Mm-hmm. So I don't know if we want to be redundant in that, or do we want to take 12, 17 and 18, and maybe wordsmith our own?
I like the examples portion from 17.
Yeah.
What if we ask 17 and 19 in round one, and ask 18 in round two? Because I think we have enough early in here, so we don't.
So you're saying maybe we don't need 12?
I, I kind of, I kind of feel like 17, 18 and 18 are a stronger question than 12, personally.
I, I agree, well, it's almost word for word, except for, it adds, 18 adds that first sentence. So it, it clarifies kind of what we're talking about, but otherwise I think it's, for me, you know, but it fits the heart of what we want from them.
Yep, so let's get rid of the, the number 12 for the second round. Say it again, Nicole, I have second round written by now, 17 and 18, which one did you start?
Uh, well.
17 and 18 first.
Amy had made a good point as far as adding it to round one. So I was thinking maybe 17 and 19 could be round one questions, and then 18 round two, because that's kind of more what, well. I didn't have that, but that's kind of more what I heard.
Yep, yeah, I agree, let's make a little check mark. Does everybody agree with that? Laura, do you, do you agree with that, doing 17 and 19 first round and second round, 18? And then we're going to eliminate number 12.
Okay. That sounds good to me.
Here's where we're at, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, we're at nine questions right now for round one. And round two, we've got one, two, three, four, and, you know, we have time, obviously, to work on developing some of our specific ones. And all right, now we've got the general questions, 20 to 26, let's go ahead and review those, and we'll talk about them. Okay, go ahead, Laura, you can go first, what are your favorites, 20 through 26?
Okay, I like, um, 22. I like 24, 25 and 26.
Do you want to elaborate on any of those?
Oh, um, I think 22 stood out first to me, just because, um, I think of our history, and also with all the changes that are coming up. I think it would be important to see how that candidate would address that. I think 24, just, I think it would give a unique perspective, although 24 and 26 might be kind of alluding to maybe about the same thing. Now that I'm rereading it. And then 25, it's just, it, we don't have a question like that, so I think that that's, um, it would be interesting to see what the candidate would say. So, I guess, that's all I got.
Sounds good.
Nicole? I had 20, 24 and 25 as round one, and then I actually liked 22 as well, but I thought since that was more specific with the change in different things, that it would go with that, I thought round two for that. Ronnie?
I guess I thought 20 and 25 to start with anyway, and, you know, I'm open to it, so put some of the others second round, so.
Okay. Amy?
Initially, I agree with Ronnie on 20. 20. That's my second choice. Thoughts on 25? You know, for round one, we may not be interviewing somebody who's been a superintendent before, so I don't know if that may be more appropriate for round two. And then round two also for 26, because they may not have that game plan in their head until they, I, you know, that's maybe just more specific to round two questions.
David?
I kind of follow similarly, I think 20 is just a little meat potato kind of question. I also hit 22, but I think maybe, um, no, I, I kind of like that one, even as a first round question. Uh, 25 is kind of a meat potato question, you know, something that they would anticipate, they probably have prepared answer. 26, I thought the same as far as a second round question. So I like 20, 22, 25 and then 26 as second round.
I think 22 too, that also will show a lot of character, it's like a character question, so I.
And I agree with Laura too, you know, as far as, we, we could find the districts with more change toward.
Yeah.
Just hiring a super tenant changes that at all.
All this other stuff, yeah. Brittany, what are your thoughts?
Um, I like 20, 22 and 24.
Well, I think I kind of like them all, to be honest, I got check marks by all of them here, getting there. But I think 20 is a good first round question, I think that would, you know, give us a good sense of kind of their character, where, where they think they would stand from rehearsed to our district. Um, I do, I think number 22 is a fantastic question, and I think it's a question that needs to be asked. And this could go for public or private sector, it's just, it's, it's just a good question. And then I like 24, and then I like 25, so. I think we.
Do we have room for all of them?
Pardon me?
Do we have room for all four of us?
We, I think we do, because we're, as I say, we're at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So I think we should for sure go with number 20 for all in consensus, it's just a good meat and potato one. And then, um, which ones do we have se, I have second, 22 and 26. Or do we want to see?
I'd say 22 for round one.
I guess 22 should be round one, too, if I'm going to do a round one.
Yep, 22, I like it, it'll, it'll give us a good sense, so we're going to go 22, round one.
Some of those other strengths and weaknesses in their district, we'd know that by round two, whether they're a superintendent or a principal, whatever they are.
Correct. Okay, so we've got 24 and 25, what are our thoughts? I think 26 is a good, a good second round question.
Yeah.
You know, or potential second round question.
Do you think that is something we want? I think there is to know.
Yeah. No, we certainly, um, you know, we have the same word, word strengths in both 24 and 25. Just read from above again and see, you know, if it might be something we want to wordsmith. I mean, it's asking a couple different, you know, it's asking it a different way, is your first year, and then, you know.
I think 24 and 26 could be kind of the same thing, so.
I think 24 is asking about the district, though, and 25 is asking you about the person that sells.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we could do 24 and 25.
And then 26 could be a follow-up for round two.
Yeah.
It would more expound, I suppose, like Amy said, it was going to get more specific.
Yeah, okay, so here's what I have. I have question one, this is all first round. Question one, two, four, Laura's going to wordsmith six and seven together, so that's four. 10, 13, 15, 17, 19, 20, 22, 24, 25. That's 13 questions. And we can certainly finalize this on the 25th, and, you know, review it, and say, do we want to cut any or not? But I think 13 questions should be doable, and then obviously we'll end with 27, you sure?
I feel one I like to throw in there somehow new, because I think one of our things we're still looking at, there is still enough data saying that we need to find out how they are in finances. We need something along that line to, which is what I'm going to watch, but.
Okay, so.
I had that written down as well. I had that written down as well. Maybe it's the second round question, I don't know, but I think it's important enough. But I always think in the first round, I always think that you're the first round, so.
I kind of agree with you in mainly, because I want to, I mean, I'm going to speak to myself, but to see our reserves being built back up is important, so if that aligns financially.
There are some questions.
So in this one?
Which one? It's pitch 30, 30? 30? The question 66 through 82.
Okay, well, let's quick review those questions and see if there's one that sticks out for round one. 69 is a good one of that.
Lindsay, what's happening right now? I couldn't make out what everyone was reading.
So, Laura, Ronnie brought up a great question. So go to the first packet, the School Board Interview Training and Preparation. Please go to page 30, scroll down and look at, there's questions on finance and building programs. It's question 66 through 82. And see if there's one that stands out to you. Ronnie brought up a great point as to David, that, you know, one of our key things is our reserves and our finances. So this is just a question on that. So if you could review those, give you five minutes to do that.
All right.
75 is out. Did everybody have a chance to read through them? Still looking, Ronnie? Is there one that sticks out to you or you're being drawn? Which one do you like?
My first one forgets the single answer of 76.
That's what I had.
A lot of these others you could ask in the second round or something if you do get more specific. But my second one was just kind of a, kind of along the same lines as 82. But I'd rather find out what they feel they know, so.
I agree.
I also like number 80.
Yeah.
That could maybe be round one. I think number 76 kind of gives you the nail on the head.
Yep. I think it just gives us just a broad perspective, like we just need to know do you have experience in this or not? Laura, we're liking 76. Do you concur?
I trust you because I can't find it.
All right, well, we, you know what, we're just going to go with 76. And we appreciate your honesty. Okay, Barb? We currently have 15 first round questions. Prods, concerns, how do you feel like the discussion went?
First thing I'm going to say is that watching how you're interacting, how you facilitate the meeting, Lindsay, and then how you draw on each person's opinion, I think it gives a very good impression. So if I were a candidate and I saw you interacting as we just did, and granted, you don't have a lot of chances to do that in an interview, but that kind of communication and that kind of camaraderie amongst board members says a lot. So congratulations on that, first of all. You did a really nice job, and Lee agrees. He's seen a lot more boards debating than I have. So that's great. That's the tone you want to set if you have the opportunity to answer questions with your candidates. As far as 15 questions, I think that's great. You could still add a few more if you want to. One of the things that I didn't mention is I will hold up a sign that says 30 minutes, and I hold it up like this when there's 30 minutes for the interview. And I have another sign that says 15 minutes, and I hold that up at 15 minutes. So we hope that they would, if they're running behind schedule, if they know how many questions there are, they'd pick it up and finish in time. So you could still ask 18 if you'd like to. If there are questions in your head that you think are important to ask that first round? Again, these are pretty general questions. You've got some picked out for round two, which I think is great because you have a great head start. But you can stay with 15, or you could add two or three more if you want to. That's up to you. The fewer questions you have, the more opportunity you may have for them to ask you questions. And then that begins to feel more like a dialogue between you and the candidate. When you're asking your questions, it feels more like a one-sided barrage of questions because you're not asking follow-up questions or engaging in a conversation. But if you do allow time at the end, maybe there's a 20-minute conversation because they were so succinct in response to those 15 questions. I think these are all really good ones, though.
Why don't you just give us five minutes to go into our sample interview questions in the packet just to make sure there's nothing that we're seeing tonight? And then we'll come back to you. Is that okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. So Paige, Laura, it's okay. You can't find it. So 28, 29, 30, 31, just briefly skim the, oh, gosh, there's more. Just skim the top. Skim the top and, you know, like the professional information. Just skim the top and see if there's something that we feel like we didn't hit on. Let's take a couple minutes and then if there's something that stuck, you know, let's just time to talk about it.
Lee, did you have a comment you wanted to add?
Yeah, I would. Madam Chair, because I know your district so well, years ago, I helped put together County West. And then I was a superintendent for West Central, which was a four-school, five-community pairing. DGF is unique in the numbers of communities and buildings. You want to explore that as a way to understand candidates' knowledge about your unique environment in the first round.
So do you suggest us wordsmithing our own question, Lee, about how they would be visible possibly in both buildings? Or how they could kind of bridge the staff between the buildings? Like, are you suggesting something similar to that?
There was a question, and I forget the number now without going back to look at it. I think you might have hung on to it for the second round. But it's possible to probe that a little deeper. Because you have multiple buildings and multiple communities, you've got a lot of history with closing, for example, the Felton Building and things like that. I think those kinds of sensitivities are important. And the skill set from a candidate to be able to environment, as well as the multiple building environment, I think is, you know, from my perspective, might be important.
Okay, thank you.
Is that either number 17 on the original list?
Yeah. I think, you know, we were looking at number 12. How would you approach in for a basket building?
Well, no.
We pressed that one off in.
It's maybe 18.
So we have 17, I have both down 17 and 19 for first round.
It was the question 18 that kind of gets on what we've talked about.
Yeah. Well, maybe we want to put all three of those in. I mean, I think we, if you want to take out, do you want to take out the parent group? Do you want to take out the community? Do you want to say, you know, there's different ways I think you could wordsmith number 18 to make it into what we're looking for. I actually kind of would find it interesting if a person was interested, a superintendent was interested in curriculum. We really don't have a curriculum question. Is that there strange? Is it finance, you know, is it just finance negotiations? Maybe we want to know how do they view curriculum and how do they want to look at, you know, their role in that. Those are questions 21, 23 through 144.
Can we add that to the question 25 on our original one where we discussed the strengths? Could we give examples of the things that you just mentioned?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think you could just ask for a separate question. I think we should have the time, and I mentioned 12, but 18 questions.
Okay, so do it separately. I agree with Nicole, although it could be, we could, if they, if, say they're not quite coming up with something, you know, is finance, curriculum, you know, just give them those little prods, but maybe we want to ask a separate, separate question.
Because I started that, too, Lindsay, as far as like groups that we don't have here. That would be something that might be interesting that you're, just because we don't talk about curriculum as much.
I think 137 is a fantastic question. It's something that we as a board have kind of asked for and have only seen, I think in my four years, we've seen a process of the math curriculum come through. And I think it would be a very interesting perspective to see if someone that's coming in, where their thoughts are. Yeah, yeah. 137, just kind of a broad question.
How do you like it? And it'll help us know if we have experience in doing that, too.
Yeah, or at least leading a task force in it. Or, you know, delegating. Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be fantastic. Well, let's go with that. Laura, I'm not going to read the question out loud. But you'll just trust us that it's fabulous.
I trust you.
Okay. Okay, so that's 16. We're looking at, that's interesting, 149 through 153, grant writing. Is that something that we want to think about? What are your thoughts, Ronnie? You've had near several superintendents. Is that, is that an important piece that you think is, would be beneficial to Novo?
I guess I don't know for the superintendent if it needs to be. If we're just more interested in how they do curriculum and everything, would be a better situation.
Who does that currently?
Hi?
The grant writing stuff?
Um, it's mostly Marian Martin does a lot for special ed. I mean, that's where most of our federal grants come from, or possibly like our food service. She rates quite a few grants, so. Yeah, I think the principals maybe worked on one. If there's like a federal grant out there that is curriculum-based, you know, they'll do that together. So I do not feel, I don't personally have not heard of grant writing one in the four years I've been.
I guess maybe that's what I should have asked.
Yeah. No, no, no. That's a great question. No, no, no. Great question.
I even kind of like 168.
All right, that's where we're at.
Kind of along the lines of curriculum.
Oh, that's a very good question. I like that question. I like that.
Like to go back and review what we've come up with, kind of like our main goals or five things or whatever, you know, and see if these questions fit what we came up with, what we're looking for.
Yeah. I would be comfortable. Is everybody comfortable with 168? I think it's a nice question. It's hitting a bunch of different things that we're looking at in terms of goals and.
Those that should categorize, too, if they fit in what the people have asked.
Correct. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I like 168, and it's a multi-question. So I think I'm comfortable with the number that we have here. Laura, it's 17, but I mean, this, this last one that Ronnie found here, that's a, that's basically, that's a big three-question one, but it would be great to get a good perspective on your thoughts there. So Barb, can you read to us? I do not know if I have it here, but what our specific goals were that we highlighted? I'm not sure where I put them.
You mean hiring criteria we came up with?
Yes.
The hiring criteria are on the list of questions. They're the things that are underlined on the list of questions that you've been going through. So acts with honesty include the hiring criteria, second with delegate support.
So do you?
Clarify that. Hiring criteria is everything except opening question and closing question and general questions. Otherwise, there was one, four, five, six, six hiring criteria. And you have one, at least one question in each of those six areas, which is great.
Okay, perfect. Well, we hit them then. Yeah, go ahead, Brittany.
About like adding a question between 103 and 118. 103, I feel like we don't have one that addresses any of that, but maybe we don't feel like it's necessary.
I kind of just, I marked 114. Just if we're out of, you know, the inclusive learning environment.
Yeah. I like 114 and 112. It's kind of along the same lines and you just kind of worded it a little differently.
Does that set people apart more like in a round two kind of question? Where you can dig a little deeper into their intent?
Yeah, certainly could.
114 is pretty broad. It should be kind of nice, maybe if you had six candidates to.
I like the word strategy. I like the word inclusive. I think that we could definitely, Laura, you would love this question. I'll text you all the questions. We can find them there.
I was going to say, if you could please, yeah, let me know which questions, you know, that are selected, so then I can go through them and all of that.
I certainly will do. Barb, I'm going to just read these out so you can mark off what we have.
Okay.
We have question one, two, four. We're going to combine six and seven. We need to wordsmith that. So between you and Laura, you're in charge. 10, 13, 15, 17, 19, 20, 22, 24, 25, 27, 76, 137, 168, and 114 is what we're going to go with.
Go back in the second page again because I lost my sheet. So starting with 15 or whatever.
17.
Did we do 15 or not?
Yep, we're doing 15, 17, 19, 20, 22, 24, 25.
All right, we're doing all four then first round.
Yep, 27. And then on those, going to the bigger booklet, questions 76, 137, 168, and 114. All right, well, I think these are fantastic questions, and I encourage us all to look through these again because we'll finalize these on the 25th. So if there's something, you go back and you're like, gosh, I don't, I really feel like that should be a second round, or maybe we should vote this, we could sort of talk about that at that time. And then start jotting down some questions for the second round. If there's ones in here that you think, gosh, that would be good, because we could probably want the same number. Or if there's questions you want to write on your own, if there's goals that you see. I mean, like, I'm going to tell you right now, we're going to ask about our reserves and how, if someone would have a plan. That will be one of my number one questions. So, you know, we can go ahead and write something up. If you think that you've done this how many times, this is number what? Five, six?
You haven't always done the search. Sometimes it's just been kind of rolled in from one.
So, all right, Barb, back at you here. I know it's been, we're going past that person. We appreciate you hanging on with us.
Oh, absolutely. Just to confirm, I wrote it down. I want to make sure for sound. Seven, the questions in the packet, 76, 137, 168, and 114. Correct? Okay, great. I will create a master list of all of these questions, and I'll remove the categories, and I'll mix them up so that not all the questions that are similar are in those same areas. I'll try to space them out with some of the easier questions or more general, sort of the softballs in the beginning of the interview. And some of the real tough questions that are asking some pretty hard-hitting things, I'll insert those in the middle. And then when you close with that last question's about. Um, and then when you close with that last question about what question do you have for us? I think you'll see the flow. I think it'll work really well. You picked some great questions. I'm glad you went back to that training booklet and looked for ones that resonated with you. There's a lot of options, I mean, a hundred and eighty or so in that book alone. And then again, the questions in your head, you know, next question about resources, things that are important to your district for round two are great, great to come up with. So I will do that next and get those to you prior to the meeting on January twenty-fifth. I did want to close with giving you some things to think about for the twenty-fifth. We're going to discuss round two in more detail that night. That could potentially be a long meeting, depending on how long it takes you to come to consensus on your top six. It has sometimes happened very quickly. And in thirty minutes or so, you have six, you know you want to interview, you make the motion, and then you announce the names. And then we continue to talk about things such as the rest of the process, including round two. Other times, it can take two hours to narrow down the list to six people. It really depends on the applicants that you have and how the board's feeling about people's strengths and skill sets that they're bringing to the position. I do want to talk about round two quickly, though, to give you some things to think about. When you conduct round two interviews, there's three ways that you generally can proceed. One way is for the board to conduct, conduct the interviews. And anyone, of course, can watch, because these are open meetings. So you conduct the three interviews. They're usually one-hour interviews with fifteen-minute breaks between. And you take all of the information that you have heard from stakeholders into consideration when you are not only creating the interview questions for round two, but when you are deliberating the candidates and trying to identify which potentially of the three you'd like to make an offer to. You've done a lot of stakeholder opportunity involvement, as I said already. So you could take that information and conduct the interview yourselves and be done with it. Another option would be to solicit feedback from people who observe those five interviews. People can sit through, watch your interviews. Now, we have what's called an audience input form. And people will fill out their perception of the strengths of Joe Smith and Jennifer Jones and turn those in. Keeping in mind that the only feedback that we'll accept from people is if they have listened to all three board interviews. We don't want to give someone the opportunity to stuff the ballot box by only listening to their favorite person and then telling you all the great things about them. We want this level playing field, so if someone can sit through all three interviews, they are welcome to submit an audience input form to MSBA. We then summarize and synthesize those to present to the board as part of your deliberations. We'll let you know what people say. And the audience that is filling out those forms could be completely open. Anyone who wants to watch, observe, and fill out the form is welcome to do so. Or you could invite specific people, representative of different stakeholder groups in the communities, to observe and get their commitment to fill out that form. So there's two ways to audience input forms submitted after your interviews. The third way of doing it is to actually create an input forum, F-O-R-U-M, a forum. And that is a group of usually about ten people. It is a representative of different stakeholder groups in the community. You may have some staff, some administrators, some community members on this input forum who actually also interviews all three candidates. Um, there's some training involved ahead of time, because they can't ask whatever they want. It's not a give-and-take, open Q and A session. Uh, the people who you invite to participate would be asked to submit all of their questions to me in advance. And then I would go through and make sure that there's no duplicates and there's nothing illegal being asked, and come up with a list of twelve, twelve to fifteen questions that that group would ask of each candidate as well. And then they would submit their feedback to MSBA afterwards, and we'd synthesize that for the board. It's an extra step, and it does take a little more work scheduling-wise. It's additional media links electronically, and it's a bigger commitment from the candidates, because they're meeting with more than just the board. Any of those three options are completely acceptable. It's just up to you how much, if any, stakeholder involvement you want in the second round of interviews. That's all I got. Talk about it, whatever.
All right, give us five minutes. We'll have a discussion about it. Ronnie, I really love your perspective as you've done this before. Have you done listening input sessions with like staff, administrators, community?
Well, usually because it's been in-person and they may be able to sit in through the interviews and give us their input then. I don't know if I like that last step and trying to do that, because basically, no matter what done the others, you can get their input, but it's still up to the board that's got to decide what's what. So, you know, why can't they just listen in or select members of each one or whatever through the three interviewers?
Okay, instead, you're saying they could, we could invite them to listen to our interview, observe, but no, yeah, fill out a form out, but not have their own, like, hour interview process? Okay, Nicole, what are your thoughts?
Uh, I know that the same thing. I like the audience input forms, and they give them opportunity to provide their feedback.
Okay, like the, we invite certain people or just anybody?
Uh, well, I, I kind of like the idea of anybody, um, because it really gives anybody the opportunity to, who's willing to sit through. But I also like the idea when she said if you have specific people, that they've already committed to those three hours or three and a half hours of time.
That's kind of my worry, is if you just let everybody, and then so they listen, they, they come to one, but then they don't come to the other two, well, we're not going to listen to what you have to say.
Right, or if they turn the computer on and.
Yeah, and walk away.
Pretend to track.
Yeah.
I think it'd be easier to keep accountable if we knew maybe who was on the other end.
On the other end.
And that they were all representative of different areas.
I agree.
I guess if people want to sit through three hours or ultimately six hours of interviews, hopefully they're interested enough and not, you know, they're invested enough to take the time.
Maybe this would be an opportunity for us to select a couple administrators, maybe four teachers, a para, maybe a couple of community members that we think, and possibly invite them. And we'll first of all, ask them, would you want to participate? And this is the commitment we need from you. You're not asking questions, but you're there to observe. Laura, what are your thoughts?
No, I, I agree with you, Lindsay. I, I think, um, I, I think, I like, I like the idea of them observing, um, and not doing specific questions. And similar to what Ronnie had said, too.
Okay, Brittany, what are your thoughts?
I like that idea. We can maybe pick like a rock from each building, so then it's, everyone has a representative and.
I was talking like one from high school, one from middle school, one from each elementary, whether it's maybe either, you know, two paras, two teachers, or, um, you, you know, you've said on, Amy said on interviews where the, the school counselor's been on, you know, and different things. David, what are your, what are your thoughts?
Either custodian or somebody through that line or something, too. You'd like to get the perspective and, I don't know if you can get a parent that's interested in sitting through it or not, but maybe somebody that's.
Yeah, Sophia, absolutely. Yeah, that's invested or wants to, would like to. Well, we have time to think about it. Why don't you guys think about what, you know, I think we need to have a couple administrators, um, you know, just for their perspective. And, and I know who I, in my mind, you know, I would choose at this time, I got to sleep on it. But, you know, we certainly, everybody can email me your thoughts or.
Could we then ask those stakeholders if they have any questions they feel are pertinent? We could bring them to the board and discuss it at the January twenty-fifth meeting? To see if we want to add them to our round two, just in case they think of something, maybe we have an RV.
We can ask Barb, but I don't see any comment that is there specific. If you could ask the question, what would, what would it be? And, you know, obviously, we have the final say in it. Would we muddle it out, or have we already asked it, or do we want to ask it again? Oh, I think that's a great point.
It's just kind of like, Lee's been through several of these. If somebody happens to have lots of interview experience, maybe they have something in mind, that's a good one that records what we're trying to look for.
Yeah.
So is this input form or them filling in forms, is that for all six or just the final three?
Final three, just the final three. Correct, Barb? This would just be the final three to have observers?
That's typically how it's done. Now, there, you could encourage people, if they are committed to participating on February second with the final three. There are some people who would love to make the effort to watch all six in round one, just so they have a better sense of candidates. And then when you narrow it down to three, I mean, there are people who really want to observe every interview and welcome to do that. It's just that you're not collecting feedback in round one. But if they know they're going to be providing feedback in round two, they can be very well, want to make the effort to watch six hours of interviews on a Thursday and a Friday. But I wouldn't collect feedback on the six people, because that's, that's a lot. That's asking people to do a lot.
Okay, good point. Kim, how, when do you want us to know as a board? When, when do you want to have your decision on this by?
I would say if we could have it that evening of the twenty-fifth, uh, because the interviews will occur on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, and then there's very little turnaround time before round two. Uh, so we want to start inviting folks to be a part of that. You don't have to name them the night of the twenty-fifth. You could also be kind of wrapping up loose ends, but the more you can get done ahead of time, the smoother that tends to go. Also, be careful semantics matters. Don't call this group of any kind a hiring committee. That word hiring triggers in people the fact that they want to make the decision. And I think if you're, or someone say that the board makes this decision, and that's, so the opportunity to provide feedback and observe the interviews. So watch the, the language you're using.
Yeah, so we could just word it, would we contact them as a board? Or say each board member selected someone, let's just be hypothetical here. Would we contact them and say, we would, we as a board would like to ask you to be, um, an observer of the, um, interviews and would like you to provide us feedback? So we ultimately make the decision? That's how you, we could call someone if that's what we would say?
Yes, that you'd like them to provide, um, provide input or provide feedback for three finalists on February second. And you already have the time identified, that starts at one P M. on the second. So they would need to block out from one until four-thirty, quarter to five. So it's the entire afternoon of February second for someone to watch all three interviews.
Okay, so I think what we need to keep in mind as a board is we probably need to make this decision rather quickly, because if it's someone that has, you know, say we want staff, we got to make sure that they have, we have coverage. Um, you know, if it's someone that works, you know, outside of this building, a community member, can they give a day off? Because like Barb said, if they don't participate in all of them, we're not going to take their feedback. You have to see all of them, so everybody is on a level playing field. So, um, why don't we do this? Why don't we, by next Monday night, everybody, if you have a suggestion of a person or two that you think would be great, um, you know, bring it to the board meeting and, and we can all kind of like go over it. Or email, why don't you email me who your thoughts are? And I'm going to actually reach out to the principals and see if there are staff members that they think from leadership or someone in, in staff that they think would be interested, um, and they could maybe kind of put a bug in their ear.
Yeah, if they have a site team meeting or something.
Yeah, and I think they have them coming up next week, so maybe that's a, or coming up pretty soon. So I will do some legwork on that all and see what I can find out. But, you know, if there's someone in the community that you think would, would make that commitment, you know, you know, email me. How's that sound, Barb?
That sounds like a great plan.
Okay, and you and I will be in touch about that.
Yes. All right, uh, that is all I had. I appreciate you taking some time to think ahead to round two, because it really does come up pretty quickly. And, um, keep thinking on those questions. If there are ones, Lindsay, you and I can speak, that you already know you may want in round two, or suggested questions from staff or administration, I don't know how you thought you might gather those. Um, I'll try to put as much together in advance of our meeting on January twenty-fifth as I'm able, so that you can make some decisions that evening about, um, not just round one, but we can actually set the, set the table for round two well on that evening. Okay, are there other questions? Yes.
Yeah, question for you, what's our duty on that two-week period from the thirteenth to the twenty-fifth with regard to these applications?
Thank you for asking that. Um, they'll close this time next week at midnight. And then on Tuesday, MSB is going to go through all of them, weed out the ones that are incomplete, and, uh, start working with our service provider to do the vetting of candidates. We will, Shelby, who's on the call tonight, will send you, um, will send it to Brooke to forward to you. She'll send a link to the database where all of those applications are housed, along with instruction of how are you going to access all of those applications. She will also send them, um, to Brooke directly and say, print all of these and keep them in a safe place, one copy only of every application. They'll be labeled candidate A, candidate B, candidate C, but you will see their names. You as board members will see their names, their work experience, everything about them. So as you then start in January twelfth to the twenty-fifth going through those, whether you make an appointment to go in and look at them in the district office, if you like hard copy and you want to go in, arrange that with Brooke, and then you can go in there for hours at a time, look through everything. Uh, don't take anything out of the building with you. There's only one set of these applications that you can look at. Don't make notes on them, but bring a tablet. Or you can look at them electronically in the database and make your notes, as I mentioned earlier, in the database. And no one's going to see those notes, including themselves. You need to be looking for people who align with what you want in a superintendent. It can be exhausting, because there's a lot to absorb. There's work history, educational history, transcripts, licenses, references, letters of reference, their cover letter, their resume, uh, their responses to questions within the application. So it can be a lot, but, um, just sit down and go through it and try and get a sense of who you want to talk to further. If there's someone that knocks your socks off on paper, um, we'll let a dreadful play about them. Um, but again, I think I mentioned this in training, don't fall in love with a resume. You know, don't fall in love with someone's cover letter. Sometimes you need to trust that MSB providers know what they're talking about. When they say someone's not a good fit for your district, there's usually a reason for that. We will not go that one evening, tell you explicitly why someone is not a fit, um, because we need to also abide by the data practices law. So we'll potentially, if you are in love with candidate F, and you say, well, why not F? They look perfect on paper. I may reply, we did not reach consensus on that candidate, and we feel that they are not a fit. I'm not going to get into the specifics of why not, because it might be based on things that are private data, and we cannot share those with you. And we've occasionally had boards that have interviewed people in our top six. That is totally your prerogative, because you know people as well. You know administrators, you know some of the people who might be throwing their hat in the ring. You can certainly choose to interview whichever six you want. It doesn't have to be who we're going to suggest to you that evening. But back to your question about responsibility, take the time to go through every application and see if there's someone that we'd like to talk to further, and then bring that list to the meeting on the twenty-fifth. And, um, some of our recommendations and those are your own. If you have, like, you really feel the other board members should consider on top of what was suggesting. It's a lot of work. It's also really exciting. I got to tell you, when you start going through and you start reading why people want your job and what they're good at, and the things that they could bring to your district, it's very exciting. And you've been through it before, you know that. But for those of you who haven't been through a search before, this is a really great part in the process, because you get to dream, get to start to imagine the kinds of things that your superintendent bring to the district. And, uh, it's very exciting. Did I answer your question? I think it was both a logistical and a philosophical question. Okay, thank you. All right, are there others? Anything, or are we good to go?
I think we're good to go. I think we're already drooling. It's been about three hours here, so.
I bet you're tired.
Thank you so, thank you so much. We appreciate the help, and, uh, we will do our due diligence. And with you and the MSB and the seven of us, we'll get her done. So we appreciate the help.
We'll see you again on January twenty-five. Take care, everybody. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye, Laura.
Bye, Laura.
Good night.